The February 13th, 2025 Des Moines City Council meeting is now called to order. Deputy Mayor Steinmetz will now lead us in the pledge. Please stand if you are able.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
To all the public joining us tonight, welcome and thank you for attending. For those who are watching online or on Channel 21, please know that we cannot attend to our phones from the dais up here. However, if you do experience technical problems, please email cityclerk@demoinewa.gov. That's cityclerk@demoinewa.gov. Let the record show that six council members are present, and Councilmember Grace Matsui had a family emergency just before the committee meeting tonight, so I'd like to ask if she can be excused. Do I have a motion? And a second with Councilmember Nutting. So Councilmember Grace Matsui is excused.
(inaudible)
Oh, excuse me. Second. All in favor. Six-zero. Thanks. Thank you. Is there any correspondence not previously received by council?
No, Mayor.
All right. Thank you. Now it's time for comments from the public. We ask that you keep your comments respectful, and please recognize that any person speaking or acting in a way that is disruptive to the meeting will be removed. You'll have three minutes to speak. Please state your name and city of residence when you come up to the podium. And we have first up tonight, Bill Lynn Scott.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members, city manager, staff, and everybody else gathered here tonight. I'm Bill Lynn Scott, a resident for 22 years, a boater for 18. And I've got some comments tonight on the boat stack. And not knowing exactly where that conversation's going later this evening, hopefully they are somewhat relevant. But anyway, I wanted to kind of, when I look at the setting, the environmental setting says we're probably not going to see any new marinas in the future. It's just very difficult to get something on the water. So having a land-based kind of launch-and-go facility like these boat stacks make a lot of sense. And I would say, at this point, you know, they're not in all marinas, but those that have the money for the facility, or have the land for it, would probably like to have them because it's an opportunity to increase the revenue. The boat stacks have been, are needed here, in my opinion, and they've been in the planning since the initial draft started rolling out. And kind of in my opinion, as to when we ought to do it, because the question seems to be, when should this occur, I really think it ought to occur at the time when we start to take the small boats off the water, and that's later in the phase. And I think that gives them a place to go. It fills up the stack immediately, so you're good to go. And it gives the marina a chance to kind of make sure they're prepared for it, and also understand, you know, the financial piece of this. If some of that money goes over, that enterprise fund has got to be able to service that extra debt. So all of those things need to be worked out, and I think going too fast too soon could be problematic. Anyway, with respect to the plan, I've heard people mention the 2024 plan. Actually, that's a draft. Nothing's really been approved on that. And so we really do need to get that plan approved, because I think it'd answer a lot of the questions and concerns that both the boaters have regarding, you know, where's it going to be, how much staging area is there for waterside, landside, that kind of stuff. And it answers some of the community concerns, you know, regarding, you know, field of view, or the view corridors, and the height of buildings, and noise. And what's really unique about our facility and this marina we have, it's in the middle of a neighborhood. You look at all the rest of them, they're out in commercial and industrial areas. So it's going to have different aspects of concern. So I would encourage you to do the plan, get the plan done, and then I'm looking forward to, you know, a really nice marina in the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bill. There's no one else who has signed up to speak. Is there anybody who came tonight expecting to speak and didn't realize they needed to sign in to do that? All right. Okay. Next up, we have our committee chair reports, and we haven't reported out for a while. So we have a few of those tonight. I'm going to begin with Chair Nutting, who will be able to report out on regard to Municipal Facilities Committee and the Economic Development Committee.
Mayor, I'd like to defer to the next one in line. I'm trying to find my notes right now.
Oh, yeah, no problem.
And I was, I thought we were going to forego that, so I'm sorry.
Okay. Yeah, no worries. Okay, so we'll, next up is Chair Mahoney from the Finance Committee. Can you pour it out?
Thank you, Mayor. Finance Committee met last week. We reviewed the work plan, but we wanted to look about, we normally review different aspects of the city's finances. We look at the general funds reports and so forth, but we asked for a couple additional things. One of them was, we wanted to look at the marina funding. We also wanted to look at what sustainable revenue might mean for a single-family house, a multi-family complex like an apartment or condominium, what a business brings to town, and these are all averages along with the warehouses and so forth. That way, when we anticipate or look at property and discuss zoning or those types of things, we know what it means to the city. If you haven't been here recently, we, due to the inflation and so forth, we have a definite where our expenses have far outgrown the revenue we're bringing in. So we're looking at different ways to bring in money to compensate and offset that. And every, it's going to be a lot of littles. If there was an, if there was an easy way to do it, we'd have already done it. We are, we did look at the general fund, and Jeff has done a fabulous job of predicting what revenues would come in and would cost. He missed the mark in total when you look at revenue versus expenses by $23,000. And when you're talking $25 million and he misses it by 23,000, it was, I told him it was like a .008 variance, which is insanely good. So that was promising. And then today, I attended the PSRC Transportation Policy Board, and big concerns about the federal situation right now. We have a lot of projects in the community, our 509 project, and many others in funding for programs that people are nervous about whether we're going to get the money or not, particularly because of our state and possibility of being held hostage for some of the policies that this state has. Unfortunately, that would definitely directly affect us. But there's about, right now, there's about $2.2 billion of federal funding that's in question whether we'll get it or not. Also, we talked about the legislative, what's going on at our legislators down at Olympia, and there's an $8 billion shortfall in the Transportation Department as well already. And of course, Governor Ferguson is the first thing before he looks for revenue opportunities, look for cuts. I think our projects are good. One of the things in particular, though, that he doesn't want to touch, because they see a promise, is ferry service throughout the sound, which I thought was promising, particularly the electrification. There is some concerns about the Climate, you know, Commitment Act and so forth, and the dollars there. There's actually state legislators that want to pull that over to transportation, which was not what the purpose was for, you know, obviously things like electric ferries and some of the charging stations and things like that as we move forward. And then one of the other policies they're talking about is, so with electric cars and hybrid cars nowadays, a lot of the money came in from gas taxes that we all would pay. Well, they're using the roads essentially for free, you know, in a way, as far as gas taxes. And so they're entertaining, whether it's going to be electric or hybrid vehicles only, or all vehicles, a by-mileage fee that would be done at every annual, you know, registration. So they're, but they're trying to find ways to fairly distribute the cost of the improvements to the roads. So that's kind of interesting. And then we just reviewed the Comprehensive Climate Plan, and that's just taking modifications, doing different things by using types of fuels, or electrification and everything, and what that would do to basically lower our emission standards to what we do currently as far as impacts to the environment. So that's what I had for those reports. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Great report. Next is the Environment Committee, Chair Harris. What do you pour down on that?
Thank you. We had an interesting meeting. We went over the capital improvements plan, and the big item is the estuary project, which we will be, I believe there's a video coming up, which is exciting. And it's, I just think it's a great, it just looks great, and I want to thank our consultants and all of our team for putting that together. Just even having that, just this short video, you'll really get a sense of what it will mean, and the, you know, not just for the beach park, but connectivity into the rest of the marina floor and so forth. It's a big, big step forward in our communication. And yesterday, I attended several meetings regarding state legislation on the airport. There are three pieces of legislation that seem to be moving forward, one by Senator Orwell, perhaps a second one. But there's a hearing next Tuesday at 1:30 PM. I will forward information to the city on Senator Orwell's bill, but this could be useful for us in terms of obtaining some kind of mitigation funding finally. And that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. So I chaired the Public Safety and Emergency Management Committee last week, and there were a couple major items on there. They, we did a, we received a code enforcement update, and mostly talking about Cory and the work that he does in the city. So Cory Baderman is our code enforcement officer. He's amazing. He's been with us for 17 years. He's a crisis negotiator and a dad. And I think that's kind of the same thing sometimes. So anyway, he works hard, keeping this a safe place to live, work, and play. We operate a little bit on the, well, quite a bit, actually, on the broken window theory. In other words, just because it's a small thing doesn't mean you can leave it alone, because a whole bunch of small things invite bigger and bigger things. So nip it in the bud, so to speak. He oversees about 75 categories of code enforcement all over the city, with an emphasis on Highway 99, Pac Highway, and complaints. So there's, those are the two major emphasis responses, that when he responds to something, it's going to be there. And some of his responses and investigations include multiple cities, state and county agencies. And in 2024, he had a caseload of 717 investigations. That's a lot. Then, so thank you, Cory. And then we also did a work plan overview for this year for the committee, and there is going to be included updates, several updates throughout the year on crime stats, animal control, summary events, our cameras, this crisis response team. Then also, they're going to be conducting some community outreach programs, such as Coffee with a Cop, and some crime prevention education in the community. And they're also going to be pursuing some education and accreditation for the force. So a lot of good work coming out of our police department. That's all I have. How are you doing there, Councilmember Nutting? Chair Nutting?
Thank you, Mayor. I wasn't able to find my notes, but I'll give a high-level overview. Mind you, the committees met over three weeks ago, so I do apologize. So Municipal Facilities, we went over our work plan. That went well. We went over the Memorial Flag Triangle Project. We were updated on that. There was a presentation, concept, and a public survey that was there, and overall, fairly decent. The Senior Center and Activity Center roof replacement, there was over, there was three layers of roofing on there, so it was a full tear-off and replacement. And then the custodial contract, we were able to, we went through the budget process and able to lower the contract value, and still receive as much as, and staff pitched in a ton to do, to get that contract lowered. Their staff is taking on a few more things than they typically would do under the custodial contract. And then Economic Development, met. Again, we went over our work plan and our comprehensive plan schedule, and then the potential of development at, in Pacific Highway South and 16th. And more of that will be coming back to council, not next week, but the week after. Municipal Facilities and Economic Development will meet again, and I'll have a better update. And I do apologize for losing my notes on that. Again, it's been, it's been three weeks plus. So, thank you. And that's all I have.
All right. Thank you. Good job on the memory. That's all I can say. It has been a long time. So next up, we have the City Manager's Report. There are several components to that. I'm going to pass the baton to City Manager Catherine Caffrey.
Mayor and council, tonight we have four items. So two that are on your agenda, and then we've added on, we'll be doing a quick update on the Fieldhouse Playground equipment, and then also a presentation briefly on the Airport Commission and Planning Commission timeline. But to start, I'd like to invite Tommy Owen or Mike Slavin. Oh, maybe it's, I'm like, Mike jumped up, but I think it's Tommy. We have quite a few representatives here from King County Metro's South Link Connections Mobility Project, and they'll be doing a presentation.
Thank you. Yeah, good evening. Tommy Owen, City Engineer. So this evening, our partners from King County Metro have joined us to give a presentation on the South Link Connections Project. This is a project that we've discussed in the Transportation Committee, and as well, we've also shared it on the city's social media. So with that, I will turn it over to the King County Metro team.
Good evening, Mayor Buxton, members of the Des Moines City Council, Manager Caffrey, and members of the Des Moines city staff. We are so glad to be here. My name is Genevieve Jones. She/her, I am, work in local government relations. I support Amanda Pleasant Brown, who's our local government relations lead. She's six, so she apologizes if she can't be here tonight. She's watching from home. But I'll give my colleagues a chance to introduce themselves, and then I'll introduce the presentation.
Hi, good evening. Thanks for having us here. My name is Nicola Geary. I use she/her pronouns, and I'm a transportation planner at King County Metro. I'm also the project manager for the South Link Connections Project.
Good evening. Thanks for having us. My name is Jessica Vu. I use she/her pronouns, and I'm a community engagement planner with King County Metro.
So as Tommy graciously introduced, we are here to do, we are here with you to talk about the South Link Connections Mobility Project. So once Federalway Link extends all the way to Federalway, we're going to restructure the bus service in South King County to better serve communities and connect people to the light rail. So tonight, we'll go over the background of this project. We'll talk about specific impacts to Des Moines. We'll talk about how we're reaching out to the public, including your communities, and then we'll end with time for questions and answers. So I'll pass it over to Nicole to get us started.
Thanks, Genevieve. Just making sure this works. So as Genevieve stated, this project is in response to sound transit, federalway link extension. So as early as 2026, they'll be extending the link one line from Angle Lake down to federalway, and this will include three new stations, one at Kent Des Moines near Highline College, one in Star Lake, and then one in downtown federalway. So recognizing that this brings a really big transit investment to South King County, our project aims to update Metro's network to best integrate with this investment, and also respond to changes in community needs. As part of this project, we are considering changes to 22 routes. These are routes that are part of our project's scope because they either operate near a future station, or because they provide service into downtown Seattle. That could be considered duplicative of link light rail once it extends down to federalway. Our project is conducting three phases of engagement, which allows for an iterative design of the network that builds off of continuous feedback from the community. We kicked off our process with our Phase One Engagement in spring of last year, where our focus was to educate the community about the project, understand transit gaps, and prioritize mobility needs, as well as recruit for our two advisory boards. So we have the Partner Review Board, which is staffed by folks from jurisdictions, major institutions, major employers, and community-based organizations, as well as our Mobility Board, which is our community advisory board. And we work with these boards throughout the life of our project. All jurisdictions were invited to staff the Partner Review Board, and together, they help shape our project priorities and our design concepts. These priorities are reflected in our Phase Two network, which we are currently sharing with the public through the end of February. After that, we will take all that feedback and propose further changes, and we plan to bring out revised concepts to the public in summer of 2025. And we'd really like to return to this specific venue to keep you all updated on our proposed changes. After that, we'll take some time to finalize our plan, and then submit it to the King County Council for their adoption in spring of 2026. And then we plan to start implementing our restructure in the fall of 2026. This slide has a lot of information about all the things that we think about when designing changes. So starting over on the left, we have our data and analysis. So really understanding how people are traveling today, where our priority populations live, and how our current service is performing. Jumping over to the right, the other bucket is our capital considerations, so making sure that anything we propose can actually be done. Can a bus go down these streets, make these turns? Is there space for a bus to take a break at the end, and an operator to use the restroom? That kind of thing. And then the middle blue bucket is all about making sure that we're taking into account all of our community input, and making sure that we're reflecting that in our networks. So based on input from our Phase One Engagement, and working with that Mobility Board and Partner Review Board, they helped us really understand the important connections and destinations in our project area, as well as helped us focus on five prioritized mobility needs. So in no particular order, these are greater transit coverage, improved early morning and nighttime service, faster travel times, better east-west connections, and improved weekend service. These next two slides are included primarily for your reference. It has a crosswalk of these five needs and how we're meeting them in the overall network. But I won't spend time on these because I want to focus specifically on impacts to Des Moines. This slide here is also included for your reference because we do want to acknowledge that our network requires trade-offs. So in order to find resources to invest back into those five prioritized mobility needs, we are proposing the reduction of some unproductive and lower ridership services, as well as the removal of 10 peak-only routes. It is important to note that of those 10 routes, nine of them are currently suspended and aren't available for riders to use today. Moving on specifically to impacts within Des Moines, I do want to talk about a couple of routes. So to start us off, the Route 635 does not have any proposed changes because it's not part of the scope. It didn't meet our criteria to be part of the consideration for this project. We're also proposing to revise the Route 156 by providing earlier and later trips throughout the week, as well as providing a connection to the Kent Des Moines Station. We have two new proposed routes, the Routes 164 and the 166, and these will replace the current Route 165, and I'll talk a little bit about that next. And then we also have improvements to the A-line by providing connections to two of the light rail stations, and then the proposed removal of Routes 121 and 122, to be able to use those resources, to invest in those needs. And again, those routes are currently suspended and are not operating. So to start us off with our route-specific information, the Route 156 provides some important connections. It connects between Highline College to South Center through Sea-Tac, and we know that it's an important connection for residential areas to Sea-Tac Airport, Highline and South Center. This route with our network is proposed to have earlier and later trips, and in the Des Moines area, it is extended to the Kent Des Moines Station to connect to Link after it serves Highline College. The next route I want to talk about is the Route 166. So as I mentioned, the 165 is proposed to be split into two different routes. The Route 166 would cover the portion between Burian Transit Center and Kent Des Moines Station, and compared to service today on the 165, this route would provide twice as many trips on Sunday compared to the 165 today. So it would come every 30 minutes, as opposed to the 60-minute service that we provide on Sunday. So that is an important thing that I wanted to highlight. For the other half of the current Route 165, we have the Route 164. So this would cover the portion of the route between Kent Des Moines Station to Kent Station to Green River College. And we're proposing that this becomes a frequent route, because we know that it's an important east-west connection that serves two colleges where people go for both jobs and school. So we see a lot of ridership on this corridor, and we think that it deserves this level of service. Lastly, I want to really briefly acknowledge the A-line. There are no service level changes proposed to this route, but it is proposed to connect to the Kent Des Moines Station and the federalway downtown station. With that, I will turn it over to Jessica to talk about our Phase Two Engagement.
Thanks, Nicole. So we're doing a lot of work to try and get the word out to riders and the public about these proposed changes, and also get their feedback on these proposed changes. So I just want to talk a little bit about what we're doing there. Oh, arrow. All right. So at a high level, we have a public survey that's available online. It's available in 15 different languages. That survey provides all of the information that Nicole just went over and more. So we're trying to share that information and also get feedback, again, from the public on those changes. We're out in person at community meetings, bus stops, transit centers, other events, trying to meet people where they're at, sharing this opportunity to provide feedback on the proposed network. We have social media campaign and toolkits. Nicole mentioned our two advisory boards, our Community Mobility Board and our Partner Review Board, that's been working really closely alongside Metro staff to help make key decisions about network trade-offs. We're obviously here today. We're also presenting to, I think, eight other jurisdictions at their city councils. And then finally, I just wanted to talk about our community-based organization partnerships. So we have partnerships with six organizations throughout the project area. They're listed here. And the goal of this, these partnerships are really to make sure that we're reaching our hardest-to-reach communities. We know that Metro isn't going to be able to reach a lot of folks. We don't have the language skills, the relationships, to be able to reach folks. And so these partnerships really allow for culturally relevant outreach, to make sure that we're, you know, reaching everyone possible.
And with that, I'll talk a little bit about how cities can get involved. So every one of you are welcome. We actually encourage you to take the survey by February 28. Please share the survey, open houses, and information on your social media channel. I'm so glad that the City of Des Moines did that. And we provided you with a social media toolkit, so there's easy-to-use graphics and draft language in multiple languages for you to post if you so choose. We would love your support in continuing to support city staff participating in the Partner Review Board. Tommy and Mike have come to a couple. We really appreciate them being there. And of course, you're welcome to reach out to Amanda or myself at any time with questions. And that concludes our presentation, so we're happy to take questions.
Councilmember Mahoney.
So could you go back to the map? Any one of them's fine. So, yeah, so...
Go back to the...
Go back to the one that says Des Moines on it, if you don't mind. Keep going. That, no, there was another one. There. So you see the area that says Des Moines, right? And a little south of it, and probably Councilmember Oxer would support me on this as well, because we've been asking. That is three different neighborhoods, Redondo, Woodmont, and South Des Moines. There's, from 240th South all the way down to Redondo, there's no bus service. And it's something I've asked in various Transportation Committee meetings and so forth. We need some kind of route that's going to connect people there on that side to Star Lake. And there really isn't anything at all. The rest of it, I think you've done an excellent job of helping cover the rest of our town, where a bus route's within a reasonable walking distance and so forth. That's the only call-out or question I have. And I did do your survey, and I put that information in when I saw... And I did do your survey, and I put that information in when I saw the routes. But I know you guys have done good work, and I like some of the changes you've made on the bus service. But that was what I would consider, for us, the missing piece.
Thank you for that feedback. We will definitely take that back into consideration. There are some hard choices that need to be made in this project, because we are working in a resource-constrained environment. So our ability to unfortunately explore a lot of new pathways and implement new bus stops is pretty limited, but that is something that we will continue to keep in mind, because we do recognize that that is a transit gap.
Thank you. Councilmember Harris.
Yeah, I just have to echo that. I've been on the Regional, the RTC Advisory Committee for a while now, and it's just frustrating to see how much improvement there is being made north-south. And there... But I've also been, you know, involved in it long enough to know that there is never enough money. And I get it. But the gravity of the city is moving south, and it just, you can't help but feel that the haves are getting more, and somehow, you know, you have to provide the service in order to create the pull. I don't know how to get there. Like I say, I know it's a food fight over every line. But and just in closing, I just, I use transit like all the time, and it's wonderful. And that's really my biggest complaint, is that there isn't enough of it. Thank you.
Yeah. You know, at Metro, most of us are transit geeks, and if we had all the money in the world, we would put transit on every single street. So we acknowledge that, you know, there are gaps, and we appreciate specifically Councilmember Mahoney taking the survey. We'll take that feedback back and appreciate you consistently pointing out neighborhoods that you think are being underserved.
Councilmember Oxger.
Yes, thank you. So I guess in looking at this, and you're looking at, it seems you're taking an approach of looking at current service, and how do you connect that? But is there going to be any effort to increase the service? We're already looking with the Amazon back-to-office requirements that we're seeing, you know, much greater volumes on both downtown Seattle streets, but also on I-5. I mean, it seems that if there was a greater effort to attract people to using the facility, that we're using the light rail, it would alleviate some of that problem on I-5. So are you looking at ways to increase the service, or simply to serve what we've got now?
Yeah, I can definitely speak to that. We are definitely looking at kind of both of those things. Because these are existing pathways, you know, we don't need to build new stops to add more service onto these pathways. And we're hopeful that by making these services more attractive and really investing in that local network, that we'll be able to get people to that light rail, to be able to travel regionally and be able to make lots of different trips. I'm hopeful that that answers your question. If not, please feel free to clarify.
Okay. Well, the other thing is, too, is, again, as Councilmember Mahoney said, you know, in the south end, we used to have additional routes in the south end intersecting to pick up people. You know, thinking of the last mile, you know, ideas, how can we get as many people there? You know, the possibility of running a bus on 16th, you know, would seem to be, could be beneficial, given the concentrations of people along that route. And then also, there seems to be a gap between connecting the A-line on 99 over to the Star Lake Station. And is there any consideration of working with both, you know, Federal Way and Des Moines as far as serving, you know, that area down there and possibly picking up more traffic through Redondo or along 99 to pick up out of West Federal Way?
We can definitely look into that. We do recognize that the A-line is, this is the only station that the A-line won't be serving. It would be a lot to deviate that to Star Lake Station. But we can certainly look at, like, any other connections that can be made to that station.
Deputy Mayor Steinmetz.
Yeah, I really appreciate a lot of the thought that has gone into this, and I'm noticing at least what appears to me to be a lot more sort of east-west travel, which is getting us out to the light rail stations, which is great. I happen to live in the desert at the south end of town. So does...
Real desert.
Well, the transit desert, you know, and so does Councilmember Oxger. And if there was some way to focus on getting either that north side of Federal Way to, you know, somewhere below 240th in Des Moines, the ability to walk to somewhere to get a ride to the Star Lake Station, that would be just a huge improvement. As it stands right now, I've got to drive. So I've got to get in the car, even if I want to take a light rail. And the way it's all setting up now, even with the new stations, I'm still going to have to drive and park. Now, parking is going to be a lot easier than it is at Angle Lake Station right now, I'm sure. And that I'm certainly looking forward to. But, you know, some way to just get that, the ability to get people out of the neighborhood, going east to the light rail station, and then coming back into the neighborhood, I think is really worthy of something. And I did take the survey as well. So I have mentioned that.
Thank you.
Hopefully that does get heard. And as you're tweaking these, that's one of the things that really could make a big difference down there. Thank you.
Yeah, we will take that in consideration, and we're really looking forward to coming back and sharing some updates on the network in the summer.
Councilmember Oxger.
Yes, is there any consideration for expanding the Metro Flex to the Des Moines area?
Yeah, that is a great question. We know that Metro Flex is a really great last-mile connector, and it's a really exciting service that really increases the number of people that have access to transit and transit coverage. At this time, as our project, our Metro Flex program is growing, Metro is working with its leadership to really evaluate how we handle partnerships with the city. So for right now, we're taking a pause and focusing on just delivering our current commitments. But I'm sure once the path forward on that is more clear, we'll be sharing back more information about how we can work with cities to implement things like Metro Flex.
Thank you.
Any other questions? One question for me is, there are a couple of these maps that have a gray broken line or a gray dotted line, and the print was so small, I can't tell if it's a proposed route, a part-time route, a partial route. Do you know which one I'm talking about? Particularly, there's one that, there's a dotted line that goes through the middle of town, probably on 223rd, maybe, and then a dotted line that kind of seems to go down into the Woodmont area. Is that a proposed? Let's see. Hmm. Go to one of the first Des Moines back. Keep, is it right there? I'm looking on that map. So you're not familiar with what I'm talking about?
We have so many maps in this reason.
Oh, right. Let me see if I can find it. It's a gray dotted line. Great, they're right there.
Yes.
So you've got those dotted lines. There's one going through the middle of town, and one kind of dips into Woodmont. What's that?
Yes. So I believe that's either 121 or the 122. The dotted lines on this map are routes that are currently suspended today, that are part of our project's scope.
So they used to be in service, or they're, you would like, they're proposed for the future?
They used to be in service, and then they've, most of them have been suspended since our COVID response. And part of this project is deciding what to do with those routes. And we are proposing removing those routes to reallocate those resources into other services.
Particularly because those were peak-only routes that connected people to downtown, and now that's what, you know, we're going to route people to the light rail to do, is to get people to and from downtown Seattle. So in order not to duplicate and in order to spend taxpayer dollars best, we're going to reinvest those in local service.
All right. And of course, my pitch would be just stretch that one through Woodmont down to the Star Lake Station. Okay. So, all right, thank you. That was my main question. Any other question? Councilmember Oxger.
Actually, in looking at that, I think that those routes would, could potentially, you know, greatly increase the number of people that would take the light rail. We're kind of encircling these communities and, you know, getting people, you know, over there, I think, would be a lot easier if we reestablished those routes. So hope you could, you know, give some consideration to that. Is there, are you surveying where the multi-housing, you know, the apartment complexes and the condos and stuff are, as far as, you know, we've got a lot of concentrated housing now, like particularly in the Kent-Demoine area? And then down at 260th, we have large complexes down there. As far as servicing that, that's something that, you know, I think would be helpful to look at, see whether or not...
We definitely look at density when we look at where transit service makes the most sense, so we can definitely take a look at what is and isn't being served by our proposed network.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Harris.
Wait, I did think of something. So I, at basically every RTC meeting, you guys have this dashboard, and this is something you can do. It looks wonderful, but it's not particularly, I'm trying to think of the opposite of, I always try to find some nice way to say terrible, but it does not make it, for all of its visual wonderfulness, it does not make it easy, which is to say it's impossible to find usage, ridership stats and so forth. And for the public to advocate for increased access, you shouldn't have to do a public records request to find out how many people are working on it, you know. And but that said, I'm pretty sure that once the new light rail stations open, because it was the case near Angle Lake, I think that will, you know, make these cases easier for east-west. But for now, if you could just make that data access easier, that would be pretty swell. Thank you.
Yeah. And as you're well aware, the Regional Transit Committee receives the annual dashboard briefing. I know we received some comments from you last year, and we're working on some updates. And so you'll receive a briefing on that in October as well, and we do take them to heart.
All right. Any other questions? Looks like we're good. Thank you. Great presentation. Great teamwork.
Thank you for your time.
That's good.
We appreciate them coming tonight and doing this presentation. And then, in case they decide to leave and not spend their whole Thursday night with us, we wanted to recognize Terry Federer from the King County Metro Transit, the Marine Division. Last Friday, Terry was kind enough to host me and Peter, and we took a very brief ferry ride to West Seattle and back. But Terry, in the next few weeks, will be coming forward to talk about an opportunity, King County will be bringing their ferry to Arm Marina to test fit it, as sort of a part of kind of investigating the operational ability to have ferry service here. So more to come on that, but we appreciate him coming by tonight.
Thank you, Terry.
All right. Next up is the estuary project. Yep.
Hello, Mayor. Hello, councilmembers. We appreciate your time. My name is Alex Johnson. I am a civil engineer in our surface water group, a staff member, and I have behind me our consultants from Parametrics and my group lead, Tyler Beakley. We are coming back tonight with an update from our last visit in January on the Des Moines Creek Estuary Project. We have advanced our design a little bit, but mostly we've gotten some renderings and a more complete picture of both the meadow side and the bulkhead side. And so I will hand it over to our consultants to show you our updates. And I would ask that we hold all questions until the end of the presentation, please. Thank you.
Hello, good evening. My name is Paul Fenton with Parametrics. I'm the project manager with Parametrics for the estuary project. And I'm going to describe a few things, a few updates, give you a little bit more context back to what we showed you before, so you can understand and follow some of the changes or the additions that we've made. And if we can get to the next slide. So as you may recall, that we described some of the changes in Plan View that are proposed for the Des Moines Creek Park. And we originally have taken, and this is to help us through alternatives analysis, we've broken the project into three parts. We talked a lot about the viewpoint and the bulkhead, what we call the bulkhead area. We did show you plans and started talking about the meadow or the green area. And the third part is a stream and the stream restoration. So those are the three, the breakdown of the three technical areas that we're working on alternatives to develop a proposed estuary and make other improvements to the shoreline here. This is a rendering, and before, we had a rendering of just the bulkhead and the beach area. And we just had the planned views of what we call the estuary area on the green and in the meadow. And so you'd asked for us to look and continue to progress that design that we were showing you in that area, and then do some renderings and so on to help with you to visualize what was proposed. Again, I just want to emphasize a couple of points, places, and so on, locations, just for references and so on. This is where Des Moines Creek is, coming through the project. If the, this is the staff-supported alternative for the bulkhead and the beach area, and this is the staff-supported alternative for the estuary. One thing I want to point out is a couple of things here and so on. This location of this line is representative of where the meadow would stop and where the estuary would start. It's generally along the line of where the historic boundary is. An important feature of the design, of ultimate design, is that we would be moving the bridge back up the creek. And this would end up being, if you recall from last time, there are a number of utilities throughout the site, and this would become a new utility corridor as part of the design. The other feature I want to point out right now is just recalling that this is the access point down to the water for the property owners that live up in Norody Park. And so this is a boundary, kind of a boundary condition for us in doing this work, as far as how far we can go in the northly direction. So I'm going to turn it over to my colleague to continue to show you some of the alternatives and give you some of the other features, and then do a fly-through of the project area.
Thanks, Paul. Nikki Redden, Surface Water Engineer at Parametrics. And like Paul said, I'll go ahead and go, a couple zoomed-in pictures of the details here. So here's a look of the proposed meadow area. So this is standing on the green, looking at the Puget Sound. And we wanted to include this picture to really get a feel of, we know this is an important event space for the city, so we wanted to show, you know, a good viewpoint of what you'd be looking at from this event space. So, and again, we do have a 3D rendering, so I'll go through this a little bit quicker so that we can get to some of the questions at the end. But here's from the meadow area. And then we do have two different pictures of the proposed estuary here, showing one at low tide, and the next slide will be the high tide. So a couple features to point out here. This revetment on the side here is the existing revetment, maybe a little bit shortened. And then we do also have an added revetment over here, again, to protect some of the beach features here and protect that access point. And then we do also have a little bit of a beach berm here to protect this estuary from the high tides. Go ahead and give a couple minutes just for this figure to kind of soak in. And then we do also have a rendering at the high tide. So this does fill up a bit at the high tide. So these are kind of a good benchmark between what we'd be seeing at the lowest point and at the highest point. at the highest point. And I think we can go ahead and play the fly-through video. theme music to that fly-through video, so for the next, the next rendering. And one other thing I did want to point out while we, if, yeah, once you make this full screen. There we go. We are looking at the connectivity, we know we had a, the pedestrian circulation path that connected into the bulkhead park area, so now the new circulation path would be still a circulation path here, and then across the bridge and connected into this pedestrian pathway, all the way over to the Marina. And then, one comment we got from our last presentation was councilmembers wanting to see sort of the, the square footage change from this, the proposed estuary design. So our existing meadow area is about 37,000 square feet, and then with our, with our cutoff right around where that historic boundary is for the proposed meadow area, we're looking at about 31,000 square feet. In one area, we will be looking at to see if we can kind of gain back some square footage, maybe make a nice connection, is the lawn area that's a little bit further up by the historic buildings, and if we add that connection in, that's about 5,000 square feet. So with, with no lawn area connection, we're looking at about a 16% reduction in the proposed meadow design, and then if we do add that connection in, it's about a 3% reduction.
I think I'll hand it back over to you.
So one of the other questions that's been asked is to understand kind of what the public engagement, overall public engagement would be with the process as we go through it. So this is something that we've prepared with the timeline on the top, and then the middle part with the arrows is the design and development process, and then the public engagement elements are in the, on the bottom row. So, in '24, we developed the alternatives that you were looking at and, and screened some of the alternatives and arrived at the, the staff-preferred alternative that we've been, done the renderings on and that we've been presenting. And those, those elements were reviewed by internal staff in different departments, and then included the grant, granting agencies were engaged in that and saw some of the things we were doing, and were able to comment on that. The next part where we're at is in the, is the two council presentations and so on, meetings that we're having here where we're showing you where we're at, and wanting feedback on helping us zero in on what the preferred alternative is, that we should advance. So the next step in this is, is to select and then to start doing what's the, what we call the 10% design. 10% design is usually what we call type-size location, so it starts to get into more specifics about exactly where different things are going to be, what they might look like and so on, and really to zero in on saying, these are, this is what we want to do, the project. So the public element of this is, would be starting with web maps, so we'd put up the options and alternatives that, where it's at when the 10% design is done. It would likely include a survey, public survey, for anyone that wants to make comment on it and so on, it'll be directed, we have some questions, and have a short project description just to more fully introduce the project to the public at large. Next up in that is, is that, once we have that input, then we would take this to 30% design, and this is where we would really start to have all the design sheets that would be put together and really start looking at the somewhat, it'll finalize what the location of the project is, finalize the important features and so on, and make some important decisions around different shapes and sizes and that would be included in the overall estuary project. At this point, we would be looking at what we call stakeholder input, which would be different levels of engagement, either from internal staff, from the granting agencies, from, usually we would include the first review with the resource agencies that would do the permitting, so just trying to get some initial feedback on that. That's part of the process where we'd also do the historical and cultural review, which would probably be, we'll do a review at the 10% design, and then we would finalize whatever feedback that could be expected during the 30%. And at that point, we would update the web map. At that, and, and that's the extent of where this part of the development of the project would end, so that's the funded part, and we would come back with that, with the council presentation, and show where this, what the status is, and then the steps after that are 60% final design. 60% design is where you, we go back again to the granters, making sure that they're satisfied with it, we start a lot of the permitting issues, permitting work on it, and then that's where, a lot of times where the very first detailed cost estimates start to come in, although we would have some planning cost estimates in the earlier design. And then again, we continue to update the web map. Then the next and last step between the 60 and 90 is when we would present it to the public and look for public feedback on adjustments or changes that might be made between the 60 and 100% design. So that's the timeline that is, working timeline with the development of the project and with the, the timing, and then the, what the public elements would be, and what the funding, what the funding situation is with that. Did you want to add anything on the funding?
Sure, just real quickly, Tyler Beakley, Surface Water Manager. On the funding portion, just a breakdown of what's funded and what we will be seeking. So in 2024, we were working with a King County Flood Control District grant for 250K. That got us to the point we're presenting today. Later this evening, we will have a motion to enact the next 250K, which is awarded to the city, already secured funding. This would allow our consultant to advance to the 30% design stage, if that passed tonight. Later this month, staff are applying for a grant for $515,000 to advance us all the way to 100%. Now, that, that's unknown, we don't know if we'll get that grant, but we are applying for that this month, and then any construction funding would also come from grants. There's no internal funding plan to support this project at this time.
Well, it looks like we have a question, but I want to make sure you're done presenting.
Last slide here, just about done, yeah. Just a few other things that we heard in the last council presentation that we want to make sure that, you know that we heard that and that we are looking at that in, at the appropriate design stage and future design portions. So one of them is reviewing the historic building elevations with respect to our meadow raise, and then also looking at those, the road elevations with respect to what we're expecting to see flood elevation, see if something like Cliff Avenue may need to be raised or something like that, so. And that's, that's, now we're to the question slide, so.
Okay, so I do just want to clarify that the, the item is coming up for a vote for two in regard to the grant, so just want to be clear about, oh, I think I would like to open up this segment for all the questions for that item now, okay? All right, go ahead, Councilmember Nutting.
Yeah, I know I'm quick to make the motion, but I do have some questions and some comments, along with some flyover music, you know, some sprits with saltwater smell and the evergreen trees and stuff like that, you know, like Fly Over Washington, that'd be great too, but, great presentation, thank you guys. So, we're going to approve a 250,000, a quarter million dollar grant, but there's a delta of about $40,000 in that, that is not covered in that grant. So Surface Water Management picking up that, $40,000 in the approved motion for tonight, or where's that coming from?
Yep, this was already programmed in the project from its onset, this would be coming from the Surface Water Utility. Essentially, that was put in to cover staff time, that ultimately, there's reserved there, so to get the full 30% we desired, we filled that delta with that Surface Water Utility funding that's already programmed into CIP.
Very good, that concludes my questions, Mayor, thank you.
I'm going to take Deputy Mayor Steinmetz first, and then Councilmember Mahoney.
Yeah, primarily for the sake of people who are watching, and me, you know, they're not focused on this, and they're like, wait, what? What are we doing? Can you go back and kind of tell us what's driving this project, why we're doing it now, and how high you, you're talking about raising the meadow and why we have to do that?
Sure, I'll, I'll start with the high level, and then if we get technical, let our consultants fill in the gaps. So this project really originated out of a regional salmon recovery plan. The city is part of Wyron 9, Wyron 9 is our local watershed here. That group highlighted projects around the sound that could enhance salmon habitat, this was one of those at the time. Since it was programmed there, it was, got placed on our six-year CIP plan as a project, we looked for grant funding, we were successful in looking for those grant funds, but, so one component, yes, salmon recovery, and that's the estuary portion you see here. The other, the other half of this coin, and why we got grant funds for flood protection is, as we look forward in time, as you saw in those graphs for the year 2100, we see our beautiful resource here get inundated with saltwater, and we've seen that example just the last, two times over the last three months with king tide events, and, and what can we do to protect this resource long-term? So, that's how this project kind of got started, with that regional framework, and then within the Surface Water Utility, we've advanced it by applying for grants. Happy to elaborate more, get more technical, if you have other.
Yeah, and the, the amount you, you're actually planning on raising the meadow or the grassy area?
The elevation that's shown here and what the plans are right now is to go to about 14 feet, and to put that into context with this picture, this represents the extent of the, the king tide flooding, and the dark blue area is about 13 and a half. And so, so there's really kind of, two standards I think they're looking for as far as why we're going to that level right now. One is, is that to address some of the king tide flooding right now, and then the second is, is that with a, there's an estimate of about a two and a half foot sea level rise. So that two and a half foot put on top of what the normal sea patterns are, would still be below that 14. So we're looking at, in the future, addressing what normal patterns would be, and then for now, addressing what some of the king tide patterns would be. And then the, again, kind of going back to when we were talking about this a little bit at the last, the last one, this is intended to, there, there's not necessarily, when we were developing the alternatives, there's not really a no-action alternative, because with the king tides with sea level rise, this is reflecting what the, what normal high tides would be. And so the idea is to address those right now and so on, take kind of proactive actions to raise them, and so 14 was selected for that reason. There are other, it's other potential, and part of, as we develop the 10 and 30%, is we'll look more into other risk management, so does it need to be higher, what other things would have to be higher, to make, could make choices around higher or lower and so on, based on what type of protection you want to provide right now, and then, and then at 2100, which is the sea level rise projection here.
Thank you, and the presentation itself is great. My only question, the only reason I ask the question is, although we've heard this, not everybody has, and so sometimes it's need to give it that context, but I, otherwise great, and looking forward to the theme music next time. Thanks.
Councilmember Mahoney.
Well, I was going to ask the same questions, but the king's ties, rising tables, the structures, the funding sources, I think when you go to the public section of this process, those will probably be the more common questions, so I'd just be prepared for them is, is what I'd ask of you, because that's the first thing they'll ask.
You mentioned that you're going to apply for the 115,000 grant, where would that, where would you be applying for that? We're not talking federal funds, are we?
No, we're not talking federal funds, this would be another King County grant. The first two grants we received were King County, this would be another cooperative watershed management grant.
Okay, thank you. And then the other thing is, have we with this plan then abandoned any prospect of a children's play area, playground?
Not by any means, I think that conversation's still to come, and part of the, you know, as we give and take of the park elements, there needs to be replacement of those, and I think that project is very corollary to this one, and those conversations we had with our park staff on if that can be integrated or happen at the same time or shortly after.
Thank you.
Councilmember Harris.
I.
Just a second, I'm sorry, you were raising your hand, are you wanting to make the motion? Oh, oh, perfect, then I'm gonna, so then I'm gonna.
That's fine, Councilmember Harris.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, I asked, you know, my questions before, but I would just encourage my colleagues and the public to watch the last, the January and the February Environment Committee meeting, because we covered a lot of technical material. I wanted to compliment Tyler in particular, your explanation of the impetus for this project, it was like really good, and it's, this will, this is exactly what local government is supposed to do, it leveraged something that has this environmental purpose, and I look at this, well, first of all, the video, this is the path forward for everything we do from here on, every kind of design thing, I mean, there's, there should be no going back, and second of all, this is elegant. It, I can, I mean, I could do without the artificial trees, but I think if you look at the sweep relative to Soundview Park above, I'm, I'm just really impressed, and I want to thank you.
Councilmember Nutting.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple more follow-up questions, I appreciate your time. So have, Tyler, have we, we've done some remediation in the past for Des Moines Creek.
Correct.
Correct.
Before, before my time, but there is a ton of effort with the upper reaches of the creek, and specifically looking at flows and flood protection of the buildings, yeah, millions of dollars of investment.
Absolutely, okay, that's the answer I was looking for. Second, second of all is, has there been, with those remediations, has there been a return of salmon to the creek?
Anecdotally, yes. I don't know if it, off the top of my head, any measurements or pre-spawn counts or salmon counts, I know those are coming, I'm in a meeting next month with King County on highlighting different creeks to do a study of salmon counts, and this is on their radar specifically because we're also looking at it, so it matches.
But it would be great to have.
Absolutely.
A, a follow-up, if that's possible, and, and so that, it leads into my final question. So there, there is some, not just a hope and a desire, but there is some scientific stuff behind this, saying that if we do this estuary, it gets all grant-funded and everything like that, that there's a huge possibility of a larger return to the Des Moines Creek for salmon.
Yeah, well, I'll, I'll take that, and, and I'm not a fish biologist, but I, I do, I'm a gemorphologist, and I do work with, considering what a natural system to look like and how they work, and I'm a hydrologist, so the interaction between the water and the landforms. So everything that we, that's happening here is attempting to, with consideration to the built environment that you intend to keep, is just. that you intend to keep, is to put many of the pieces back that were there before and to diversify what's there. And all the elements that are diversifying are diversifying to habitat elements that are things that favor salmon. And we do have fish biologists on the team and so on, so they wouldn't, they're not leaving up to an engineer to do this. But they, so all those elements would be included and be considered in everything we're doing. And I would say again, as from the perspective of where I come from with landforms and hydrology and so on, is that we're trying to seize as much opportunity as available at the site to diversify it and turn it into something that has a, that the dynamics that will, are always occurring in these estuary areas would continue to develop and to change over time and so on, while still balancing between maintaining the infrastructure that you have here.
Very good. Thank you. That concludes, Mayor.
Councilmember Harris.
I would just say that, you know, the war is long and we have these individual, we also discussed Massey Creek. And, you know, you, you have these small little winds over time, and it takes decades. And it's three and a half miles or whatever up to the airport plateau. And, you know, any, basically, any small segment you can make improvements on. Then there's this whole other Des Moines Creek Basin Plan and so forth. So I just look at every improvement we can make. You just have to attack and, you know, do what you can. And then when the next opportunity comes, then you work that. So, thanks again.
Thank you. Any other questions down the table here?
Well, I do have one. When we were doing the bulkhead project out in the marina, we purchased some environmental credits or rather from a mitigation bank up north. And so I'm wondering if at any point along this process, we would qualify, I think, what is it, as sponsor or something with, as a mitigation bank where people could purchase credits from us in order to complete some of this?
That's certainly a possibility, that there's, there might be some, something available that's left over. There's, even though this is mostly restoration, there's always in what I call the bean counting that goes on with permitting is there's trade-offs. So they're saying, well, you're filling over here, so we're going to mitigate there. This project, and they don't, really don't like this term, but this project is somewhat self-mitigating. So if there are impacts because of the project, then you do, might need some offsets within the project. But back to the banking question, that's, you know, how we characterize it, is there are a lot of strings attached to that. And so it is, I think that it is certainly relatively straightforward for us to look and see whether or not there's some additional assets, you're on the plus side on benefits that are here, and look at those and then see whether or not that's an opportunity for you. But I would just mention that there's a lot of very specific strings that get attached around performance, counting what benefits that you're going to have, those kind of things. So to do that, and then there's a second part about creating the marketplace and basically the selling of the credits and so on. So those are all possible with some of the constraints that you do have because it is an important, you know, facility, a important feature in the, in the city. It would, I would suggest that you use that, look at it with caution, just because of the strings that are attached. So it isn't to not do it at all. It's a great idea. This is a really good type of habitat that they're looking for and so on. But just understanding that you wouldn't get, you, there would be some considerations that would have to be made in the permitting that would attach themselves to the project.
Okay, well, I appreciate that answer. And at some point, if we have more questions on that, I guess we can afford. So, thank you so much. Any other questions? No, we're probably not going to make them, we're not going to make a motion. Now we'll wait till later in the meeting. Is that what the handle is? Okay. Okay, back to you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you so much.
I'm going to ask Mike Slovan to come up and give us a very brief update on the Fieldhouse Playground. I got some questions about the item that's on consent, but I think the real question is one I got asked last weekend at my son's basketball game, just about that slide. So that's really the update we're looking for, Mike.
All right, Mayor and City Council, City Manager. So to go back about where the park started, it's been, it's been over a little bit over a year now since we actually bid the project and got it started. We have completed the park except for the slide. Everyone may be aware that we had issues with the slide with regards to slope and design and all those types of things. The project as was designed is actually completed at this point. We decided as a staff, myself, and then I brought the City Manager and the City Attorney out there, take a look at the steepness of the design, although it's, it's passed all the safety requirements of the state, and we could take the fence off today. I don't think I would want to put my kid down there. The City Attorney agreed with me when he was, when he was interim City Manager. And so we decided not to open that, and instead to take a look at adding some additional fencing. And then because of the steepness of the, of the slopes, we're adding on one side, the intent is to add like a rock, you know, the rock climbing wall type material on one side and a tow rope on the other side to climb up to get back up to the top of the slide on the rubberized turf instead of going around through the grass because it's wet and slippery also. So we're adding an extra component to the park before we open it. It should be open by June is the hope. And the item today is to allow the architects and designers to complete those pieces and redesign those. So we have to, we had expended that design contract, so the numbers today are for them to do that.
So what you're saying is even though all the engineers and everybody says okay, people with kids went over there and looked at it and said, I don't want to put my kid on that slide. Let's do something different.
Everyone wants to put their kid on the slide. I'm worried about the kid that's standing next to the slide. He gets pushed because the other one wants to go in.
Okay, yeah. Well, thank you for the caution. I appreciate that. Any questions? Councilmember Nutting?
I just have a comment. Being in the construction field, we do our best to build things per design. And then sometimes when it's done, it doesn't look right, no matter what you go through. And it's, it's on those that are actually going to be the ones in court that have to explain it away. So I applaud your team for taking the time to make sure our kids in, in our community and other communities are safe. So I think this is the right thing to do, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Last item, Rebecca Demming is going to quickly go through a
couple of slides about the Airport Committee and the Planning Commission. You know, the last meeting, you all gave us some good direction on these two groups. What I wanted to show you is a proposed timeline for when these two groups will come back. As I had told you all, because both of these new groups will live kind of within community development, we need to phase that workload. I'd also remind you that we have a comp plan that we have got to get done. So the purpose of this is sort of to show you this timeline and get feedback if our priority is wrong, if you want us to focus on a different group first, or get some feedback. Rebecca?
So we've got the Airport Commission. We're looking at bringing that back, sorry, Commission Committee. I put the wrong terminology in there. So Airport Committee. To bring that back to council to discuss the composition, how many members, how would you like it composed, since we didn't get to that on March thirteenth. Then we would put out the advertisement for those members in March through April. Then we'd have that, those interviews, and then bring that back for confirmation in June to establish that. So that's our proposal there. And then the Planning Commission would then, after that's established, come back in July, discuss the composition, again, bring back some proposals, how we would establish that. That one takes a lot longer because that requires a lot of code changes and updates throughout the municipal code. So then we would work with the City Attorney's Office to update all of those codes. Then we would bring that back for a first reading approximately early fall. Then do the public advertisements, again, interviews, and then second reading, adoption, and appointment around December. And that we proposed it this way because it would coincide with getting the comp plan done, and the timing and our schedules to try and work out our workloads.
All right. So any questions and comments on this proposed, this is a proposed plan?
Correct.
So this is the proposed plan. Deputy Mayor Steinmetz and then Councilmember Mahoney after that?
Yeah, the proposal put the Airport Committee first. Is that because the airport's a little more tangible and there's a lot of stuff happening with the airport right now? So is that, is that the thought to put that first, or am I missing something? Because that would be my thought.
It would be to establish it before the SEPO would be released is one thing, as well as that one takes a little less, one takes more time with code writing and, you know, and less time possibly for community development. The Airport Committee is, I think, more in turn, you know, they would do more work without, less staff, where the Planning Commission would take more staff level work to prepare, I guess is how I would word it.
Yeah, I think that's a good, I also got a couple of questions about what is the actual dollars and cents costs to launching these committees? You know, obviously some staff are exempt, so it's, you know, they're on salary, but there is a cost for staff that are not. So there are hourly staff that would have to run the AV, the tech, we'd have some overtime from other employees that would have to work the meetings. So we wanted to also make sure we had a good sense of those costs and could plan for them. So that also kind of drove some of the decision-making on that.
Councilmember Mahoney.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to compliment you. I thought you did an excellent job, particularly with the Planning Commission piece of it. I think it'd been painted as an end-all, be-all when it, when it really had a focused purpose that was realistic, that can be used. And I also got to compliment you both in the fact that you, I believe you've come up with reasonable timelines to achieve these that doesn't affect the things that we really need to get done for most of this year. So I support what you've done here and I really appreciate your work.
Councilmember Harris.
Thank you. So is there any impact on, I defer to your preferences, of course, but is there any impact on the comp plan or interaction between the comp plan and the Planning Commission? I'm not trying to accelerate one or the other. I'm just trying to think how they sort of play off one another.
If we had an established Planning Commission, yes, absolutely, the comp plan would go through that. But I don't think there would be enough time, even if we pushed a Planning Commission first, we would be delaying the comp plan even further.
No, 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 that's actually not. I'm asking, do you need some kind of, you know, certainty as to the Planning Commission? Just is there something knowing now that will make it easier for you to be able to, you know, complete your work with the comp plan and then is certain-
Knowing that I can finish the comp plan and not worry about establishing the-
That's what I'm getting at.
The Planning Commission, yes. This, this schedule helps because this plan is based on assumption that I'm trying to get the comp plan done by July, and that then I can start worrying about bringing this back in July, so.
Okay. And just rhetorically, just referring to the cost of these things, I'm thinking more of your time, whether we pay you by the hour or not, you know, which probably ends up being like about four twenty-five after the all the hours you put in, is, matters. I just want, I mean, it matters. And so just very mindful of not overscheduling any department heads with this stuff. So-
I appreciate it.
I assume you've, and I don't, I don't want to be patronizing, so I just assume you've already factored in, you know, like how much you can take as a human being-
We're discussing that. We keep discussing it as we keep going forward.
Okay, very, very good. Thank you.
Any other comments? Well, I agree with the comments. I feel very protective over, you know, it'd be nice if you were, you could stay excited about your job and the things that you get to do and the creative things. And that the Planning Commission becomes a resource, not, not a burden, right? That it becomes a resource. It's a workforce multiplier on some levels once it gets established and up and going. And so to me, I'm, we've been without one for such a long time, and we have wanted one. And so to wait for a few more months to get one is, as long as it's out there and we have it scheduled, we know that we're going to get one. And, and the major work that it would have done this year, they wouldn't be able to do anyway. So I'm fine with this, with this proposed schedule. So you're not really looking for a motion. You're looking for a head nod at this point. So I'm looking down the line at some head nods. Got a lot of them. Kate, is that a question or a head nod?
No, I always go for, you know, I, I, as opposed to-
Okay. Well, it looks like you got some good head, great. Thank you. Thank you, Rebecca. Okay. So it looks like that's the end. Do you have anything else?
Yeah, nothing.
All right. So, next up, we have our consent agenda. And with the City Clerk, please read the consent agenda.
Item one, approval of vouchers. Item two, Black History Month proclamation. Item three, Barnes Creek Trail, South Two Fortyth Street consultant contract. Item four, senior center roof contract amendment. Item five, Fieldhouse Playground Equipment Upgrade Project Agreement. And that concludes the consent agenda, Mayor.
Thank you. Do I have a motion? Councilmember Nutting?
I move to approve the consent calendar as read, Mayor.
Second.
Second, Councilmember Mahoney. Is there an item that a council member wishes to pull from consent? Councilmember Oxiger.
Yes, item two.
Okay. Any other items? All right. With that in mind, all in favor of the consent items one, three, five, one, three, four, and five, as read. All in favor, six, zero. All right. And Councilmember Oxiger, I'll hand over item number two to you.
Thank you, Mayor. The only reason I pulled this, not because I'm opposed to the proclamation or anything else, it's just that some of the things that are going, are going on nationally right now and the fact that notification of when these months are, this includes things like pride, indigenous Americans, and indigenous peoples, and, you know, various other proclamations that we, we do for months that are meant to honor people. I think it's going to be very important that we, going forward, make sure that we do these at the start of the month, because the way Google is doing is they're no longer putting them on the calendar. You've got to go digging for the, the event. So by us, you know, recognizing these, you know, at the, say, the, the meeting previous of the month that we do it. So like, in this case, we would have done it the last meeting in January. Just to make sure that, that these are, we deem these to be important by doing these proclamations. And with what's happening as far as the notification on these now, I think it's important that we move it forward because they are important to us. And so that's the reason I pulled this. And it's, make it certain that, yes, we, we do definitely believe that these things are important.
In other words, we're proclaiming that this month is coming.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, anything else?
Do you need a motion from me then?
Then if, yeah, if you could read the motion, it should be-
Call it up here.
Number two.
So I move to approve the proclamation recognizing February as Black History Month.
Councilmember Mahoney was the loudest, so I'll take that one. All right, any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Six, zero. Thank you. All right. So I will read that proclamation. "In celebration of Black History Month, this celebration of Black History Month is a recognition across this country of the experience and events occurring in the lives of African Americans and those whose roots run deep through the African diaspora. Whereas Black History Month is celebrated in recognition of achievements and contributions made by African Americans and all people of African descent in the United States. And whereas, Black History Month affords special opportunity to become more knowledgeable about, about black heritage and to honor the many black leaders who have contributed to the progress of our nation. And whereas-" And whereas, such knowledge can strengthen the insight of all our citizens regarding the issues of human rights, the great strides that have been made in the crusade to eliminate barriers of equality and the continuing struggle against racial discrimination, injustice, and poverty. And whereas, the city of Des Moines embraces its diversity and acknowledges the invaluable contributions of its African-American residents and visitors as we celebrate Black History Month. And now therefore, the Des Moines City Council hereby proclaims and recognizes the month of February as Black History Month and urges our citizens to join together in making this period of rededication to the principles of justice and equality for all people. Signed this thirteenth day of February, 2025. Thank you, Matt. Very nice. Just want to comment, last year for this meeting and for whatever reason, I didn't, didn't think to bring it up, we did listen at the opening of this segment to the what's now come to be known as the Black National Anthem. It is the most inspiring piece of music and I would encourage you to Google it and listen to the whole thing. It's very inspiring. I think it's Lift Your Voice and Sing, is what it's called. All right, so that's it for the, our consent agenda. Now we're on to unfinished business and we're back to the Des Moines Creek Estuary topic. Do we have anything more that we would like to say, Tyler? I think we, we expended our questions, but just for the sake of process, since we've had our presentation, we have a motion. Do we have any more questions or comments before the motion? All right, I am, as the Chair of the Environment Committee, I am going to offer the motion to Councilmember Harris if you'd like it or if you wanted to first. Councilmember Nutting?
I move to approve 2024, 2025 On Call General Civil Engineering Services Task Assignment, 2024 to 2026 with Paramatrix Inc. to provide, I'm sorry, to provide preliminary engineering and permitting services for the Des Moines Creek Estuary project in the amount of $289,816.30 and further authorize the city manager to sign the task assignment substantially in the form as submitted.
Second goes to Deputy Mayor Steinmetz. Any discussion or final comments? Just mine, it's a win-win-win. It, it saves the meadow, creates salmon habitat, and it's paid for by grants. Absolutely great. All right, all in favor, raise your right hand. Six, zero. Thank you so much. All right. All right, next up, we have a launch and stack storage discussion. The purpose of this item is for staff to solicit feedback from the council as to what information they'd like to see in the upcoming launch and stack storage presentation. So we have our harbor master coming up, Scott Wilkins. Thanks, Scott.
Thank you, City Manager, Mayor, Deputy Mayor and Council, Scott Wilkins, with your Des Moines Marina. Yes, tonight we're here to just give you a few, few notes, a little bit of history and some things, and then we're here to answer questions and move forward, so. Next slide, please. So tonight's agenda is the current plans for our existing launch that we have there and then two components to look at is the new launch facility and the dry stack. And then we'll be discussing on what to do in a feasibility study. Did you want me to do that? Okay, thank you. Okay. Our Marina small boat launch in a current status. The small boat launch was closed for safety reasons in June 2nd back in 2022. We're asking Quig Brothers right now. We will be asking Quig Brothers here soon to give us cost estimate and a time estimate to remove the current structure under our current in-water permit. There's time sensitive and time constraints on this. As you remember back when we had the contract approved, there was so many days to move boats, so many days to do construction, and for each one of those, we have a very short timeline. So we need to make sure this can fit within their timeline and not jeopardize our other projects. The engineer's estimate from their prior, prior similar projects is about $350,000. This is to remove the superstructure, all the creosote pilings and the launch deck, and then we have to record all the hazardous waste to send it off to the state for our mitigation and that's what that one's for. If they cannot do it within this, this 20, 25, 26 window, then we could have to add an extra $134,000 for mobilization and demobilization if they come back. Thank you. We have, we have been permitted to install the new launch deck and it's, it's covered under our existing permit. The only recommendation we have for this at this time is if this project is committed to the dry stack, then this, this would, we would move this forward. We would need to identify some funding sources and counsel, for council to move forward. We have limited deck capacity, as you know, and so the use of the bond dollars are alternative for project delivery. And this would be a steel piling with a concrete deck upon it for negative forklift. Next slide, please. Some of the cost estimates in the installation and then the new facility, the engineer's estimates, the concrete deck and the steel piling, about 1.2 million. Timber boarding float down on the bottom where we dropped the boat next to so we can move it into a staging area. Pavement improvements to handle the large forklift and the larger boats that would be carrying miscellaneous improvements, water, you know, electricity and other things to the structure. Thirty percent contingency and 10.2% tax, about 600,000. Design and engineering and city permits and other permits, we're looking at another 15% for another 300, so a little over $2 million. And this is not, like I said, this is not including the first round of tearing it all down. We ran our comparisons from way back, we've been doing this for a long time. Bayside in Everett has a similar of what we're looking at right now with the negative forklift. Foss Harbor in Tacoma, they actually take them out of a building, put it on a sling and sling them into the water. Twin Bridges is the negative forklift style and Port of Edmonds puts it on more of an elevator system and drops it in the water with it like that. The building we're looking at is about the same size as the Bayside in Everett, 160 feet wide, 270 feet deep and about 35 feet tall, which is city, city heights. Potentially would hold 170, 200 boats, depending on the smaller boats to the larger boats, what size we can fit in there. They fit into a cube, that's how we'll be pricing it. Eighteen foot boat fits in a cube, 30 foot boats fit in a bigger cube. Some of the pricing right now is about $275 for open stack, all the way up to $788 for indoor storage. During this time, we'd be removing the smaller boats off the water and including taking out the small 1970 garages, the dry sheds there and then hopefully incorporate all these into this building. Some of the other things we'll be looking at, we also, we have some additional space kind of south of where the proposal is now in the bank where we could put some open mortgage if available and people want that. Some of the other amenities for the building itself is lighting, fire suppression, and heating. Just some dry stack background, why we're doing this, it's a revenue stream to offset future capital needs. To 2019, Reed Middleton did the condition assessment report, which gave about 10 to 15 years of dock service life. And now that's down to about five to 10 years for that service life, so it's going to help retain the displaced smaller boats that are currently in the water. Dry stack benefits, retain existing revenue streams from smaller boats, create additional revenue to support the marina. CIP goals, reduce some issues with some derelict boats. Some of the boater benefits, of course, is lower maintenance and cost due to the exposure of the elements, keeping them out of the saltwater. Climate control, you don't have to winterize boats or anything such as that. Freshwater rinse and put away every night. And then the extra revenue that we could get with concierge type services, you know, get them out of the water, help them fuel, throw a bag of ice or two in there and things like that and get them ready to go. On the right-hand side there, that's approximate size of 160 by 270. As you can see, it takes the existing dry sheds on the backside of the marina, on the east side there. And, yeah, that's it. So we'll go to the next slide, please. This is actually the structure up at Bayside, something we're trying to model after a little bit. Typical, typical tilt-up steel buildings, 1.3 million approximate. Depending on the boat size, you're looking at a million dollars for the rack systems. Additional cost to look is our state, city and federal permits, those are all determined, I do not know those right now. The pad, that's got to be a very thick pad, that's a huge forklift. We had to do about, well, I can't honestly remember, but we had to make a very large pad for the travel lift for the CSR boatyard. It's a very thick pad for that, all that extra weight. This is something like that. The cost of a negative forklift is about a million dollars. So to build this, to build this facility right here, estimated about 3.3. Next slide, please. Some of the feasibility study for us is the demand on Puget Sound and the demographic, demographics that we're in, we're in a very central location between Tacoma and Seattle. If you drop a boat in our water, you're two seconds away from getting out into Puget Sound, unlike Tacoma where you have to go all the way down a couple, couple miles putting before you hit the open water. Twin Bridges up in Anacortes, you have to do the slough for a couple miles before you hit the open water, so for us, it would be very convenient. We have to think about optimal structural size for the location, capacities, capital costs, operating cost, potential revenues, return on investment and financing options if the council wants us to proceed with this. So what assumptions should we make? Dry stack or open stack? Dry stack only or include the all-purpose building that we spoke of in the very early times of this type of thing? Location, the existing shed area or consider an entire, the entire marina floor to lay this out into? The optimal structure size and view considerations? Determine the minimum heights required to maximize revenue per cubic foot, as I explained, with accommodating, accommodating various vessel sizes. How will the, how will this structure impact surrounding views? When we put the big metal structure up there, we'd be interested in beautifying it and putting a facade on it that could help it, you know, look better than a big steel box. As you can see, yesterday, you can wave to Travis up there, he went up there in the bucket truck and dropped the tape down to the ground and measured out 35 feet. You can see where it sits right there, about the guardrail on Cliff Avenue. And you can see to the right, the condo, it's a little bit higher than that condo. Next slide, please. This is him 35 feet up with the bucket truck against the bank, the condos, looking out over the water. Our marina office is almost 30 foot, so this building would be five feet higher if chose, if council chooses. Looking back from about the peak to the condos, you can see the yellow line on the right, that's 35 feet. Now that's, thank you. Nope, you're good, thank you, appreciate it. The far left yellow line is the, is the eve. We figure if you do a building to this size, do a 12, 1 pitch on it, so at the eve, you're down to 29, 28, 29 feet compared to the 35 at the ridge line. And then it does the same going the opposite way. On the left there of that yellow line, we, we're pretty certain we'll need a fire lane on the backside of that, so it can't go right up to the bank anyway. Next slide, please. So all-purpose building, if we include this into the feasibility, the demand study, we would ask for community input, what they would like to see in that type of structure? The size of that structure and part of that size would be dependent on how big the dry stack actually is and how much room is left over on the property. The cost, the city benefits, maybe taxes and things like that, how the city could get money off that and the marina benefit. Some of the suggested uses we've been looking at in, in the early times was a marine supply store, year-round fish or farmer's market, some type of retail. Or do we move the office, part of the marina offices and the restrooms over and the shops, our marina maintenance shops, which would actually allow for new construction where the marina office is now and the bathrooms are right there on the water? So these are some potential developments and things we can look at. And I think that is it. Questions?
Question?
I bet there's going to be a few.
Yeah. Well, I, I misunderstood this. I didn't think we were getting a presentation. I thought we were just going to come ready with what we wanted, what we wanted in our presentation, so I'm like, oh, I'm not prepared for very many questions, right? But we'll go ahead, I'm going to just start and start writing, so. Councilmember Mahoney?
Thank you. Always love when our harbor master can come and present in front of the council because he loves it so much.
Favorite location.
Yes. I know that Bonnie's back there enjoying your suffering. And we are too.
Appreciate it.
So real quick, has any, obviously these would be some of the things, but maybe could feasibility also discuss, understanding sea level and everything else and the heights, is there a possibility of going down eight, 10 feet where we don't, you know, obstruct views?
Sure.
Or have to go to with a less, lesser height?
Yeah, if we do, if we do, to maximize the revenue, you want to get as much, as many boats as there is we can, so that's why we went to this maximum structure. The more you bring it down, the less revenue you're going to get or you're going to widen it and take up more, more real estate on the marina property. It's, it's a council decision on if you want to do such a thing like that and we can look at that during this.
Well, and, and my other question is, is the potential, would this feasibility possibly consider excavation of some of the material to get that height but not obstruct views?
I don't, I don't know if our water table would handle that.
Well, and that was part of, that was part of my precursor is could the water table handle it? I think it's something we'd have to consider because we get into a different issue when we start obstructing views, is why I ask.
No, I appreciate the question.
Okay.
And I have Katie back there writing down questions and stuff for us, so.
Scott, will you go back to the slide that had the list of sort of the things we were looking for feedback on? Yeah, just to kind of help spark some conversation.
Yeah. And the other question is, I know discussions have happened about possibly incorporating the Mass Center or SR3 or a combination of the two to some kind of environmental regional aquarium? And I know you noticed the businesses and other things, but I think we should probably add that consideration, something that could bring tens of thousands of visitors that might eat in our restaurants and shop and shops and so forth.
And, and you know, you have the, the, oh my gosh, I can't, the High Line, the school also.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mariner High School, yes.
Appreciate it.
So that's, that's an additional component, so I, it just should be added to the list, I, I think, and I thought you saw that too. All right, those are my questions.
Councilmember Nutting?
Yeah, I saw the rendering of the building that could possibly be on there. Is there, has there been any thought of going to more like a shed roof style building as opposed to a gable style building to kind of that off?
We can look at that, you know, it's all going to be cost. I'm sure the, the roof beams are be massive, you know, to do the flat structure and that have it engineered and everything else, but definitely it's something we can definitely look at, you know?
I think that's, that's all for me for right now.
Deputy Mayor Steinmetz and then Councilmember Harris?
The only guy here that owns boats and an eighteen-foot boat was ideal for the staff.
I'll stick you in there.
Sorry. You know, I, I really think there's an overarching question first, which is location. And, and so I would like to see, I mean, I, I have this idea in my head and I'm no expert in it, that we have kind of more industrial and we have a nicer end, as Mayor Luxton likes to call it, the charm. Where, where people can be there without having to, you know, hear a big noisy diesel forklift. So I would really like work with the people that, that is part of the feasibility and frankly, if we were to just say, oh, by the way, everybody in town, we're going to put this. And frankly, if we were to just say, oh, by the way, everybody in town, we're gonna put this big structure right in the middle of your view. Um, you know, that's kind of a little, um, as, as we've seen, um, you know, through the concept of, we're not doing it yet.
Right. All right. I'll get the phone calls tomorrow.
Some people will go, you know, get the pitchforks and.
I'll get the phone calls tomorrow.
And, you know, we're not there, but I do think we need to put it out there, and I think we need to hold much more public of education, uh, on this before we proceed. Uh, it does sound like we have a little bit of time before the small boats start coming out of the water, as Scott suggested. That's a good, uh, idea to try to time those out a little bit. Um, the other thing is, I'd like to have a much better understanding of, uh, in the current location that's being suggested, um, that's a significant pedestrian problem. And people walk back and forth all the time. What is it gonna pay from a liability standpoint, so maybe this is for the city attorney, um, to make sure that the city is protected, um, from, you know, somebody's shit gets away from them and runs it in front of this billion-dollar forklift, uh, that has a negative list, you know, so that we're, we're making sure that the insurance alone isn't gonna run us, you know, power with everything, uh, and then that gets back to location, what the insurance is agreeing. Um, the negative forklifts are a million-dollar piece, and one thing, you know, when we went on a field trip up to Everett, it was very clear, you gotta have at least two, because they're gonna break down. Things are gonna do that. The tires alone are like, I wanna say, 30, 40,000 dollars a piece.
There, it's, it's a very expensive piece of machinery. I mean, just like our travel lift is very expensive, it has aircraft tires on our travel lift, so you know what those are. Yeah, so.
It's a pretty unique piece of machinery, so they're lonely, they're very humane in fact. And if you, if you need a part, what are the timelines involved?
True.
To get, to get that replaced. I think that's a very important consideration. Um, and that's probably, uh, you know, certainly, we've hooked up at Everett, made that very clear, that's why you gotta have two.
Yeah.
Because if your part, if, if your forklift breaks, and then you have to wait three to six months for a part, you can't get those boats off the, off the stacks, and.
You're impacting a lot.
You're gonna lose, once you do get them off the stacks, they're supposed to go to someone else.
To answer your first question, if I may, Deputy Mayor, uh, we would, for the launching and crossing pedestrian pathways, we would have to do something very similar that we have with CSR with the travel lift there. Wide swing gates with stop signs on the outsides and everything else to really stop the flow of traffic during the launch and things like that. So there's those things that would have to really be considered and factored in.
And, and that begs the question, frequency.
Correct.
How often?
Correct.
Are boats gonna be coming across there and coming back across there and cutting off that, that traffic? And is that, you know, fundamentally or philosophically what we want for our marina? Or do we want to be a nice walking area? And expect that, that location to be in. Um, I would like to see, uh, some consideration of, is the city gonna provide this service, or are we gonna contract it out? In Everett, it's a private company that actually runs it. I don't know who built the building.
Dan, Dan, Dan himself that owns, owns Bayside up there, they, they had a construction, they, they take, do run the business themselves, yes.
And so there's, you know, is, is that a model that perhaps is, is better for the city to follow as well? Do we have enough of a staging dock? Because, you know, people are gonna call the night before, I'm going out in the boat, I want it ready to go when I get there at 6:30 in the morning.
Yeah.
What if they want a good 5:00 in the morning? How are we gonna do that?
Yeah.
And so we need a place to get, you know, ten boats in the water, uh, so that people can show up, jump in their boat and go. Because that's the type of service that they're able to provide at, at both Everett and, uh, the entrance, a few places you can look at. And so are we gonna do that, how does that factor into the other part? It just seems to me there are, this is a much bigger conversation about what we want on the marina floor. Uh, and do we wanna have sort of two different areas, or do we just want the one area? And that then kind of begs the question, is, is if you were to find a different area? If we put partners in some of the other groups that, uh, or landlords that own property on the marina floor, move it to one end or the other, uh, that's a conversation that I think is where we go too far down this path, to see if that would be the case.
Yep.
So I would like to see that, that consideration, and do some preliminary conversations with those various entities that'll place on that. So I just think there are a lot of questions where we jump into the water on this subject.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Councilmember Netting.
Um, yeah, thank you, Mayor. Um, I'd like to kinda dovetail on Deputy Mayor Steinmetz's comment about privatizing, possibly doing a 99-year lease with somebody, so we're not taking on as an already bootstrap city with finances. And, and even though the marina's a, um, enterprise fund, um, maybe seeing what that looks like, contracting out and, and allowing a private person to build a building with a 99-year lease and some agreements in, in there on how to operate that and, and what our fees would be to operate on the marina floor. Um, not taking on that responsibility and purchasing the million-dollar negative forklift, all that other stuff. That, that there's gotta be somebody out there that wants to do something like that. And, and it doesn't, it decreases some revenue for the marina, but it also decreases the workload for the marina and still gives us some revenue stream, so.
Your labor possibly.
Those are my thoughts. And, and I'd be interested in a multi-purpose building as opposed to just deploying, doing dry stack and, and, I mean, uh, uh, just maximizing our revenue stream is doing an indoor storage and an, and an exterior storage uncovered kind of thing. So tho, those are my thoughts, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Harris, and then Councilmember Mahoney.
Um, I don't really have too many questions, because, you know, I think I've seen both you and Joe make this presentation about 11 times over the years. No, that's not hyperbolic.
No, 2003, I was.
Yeah, and, and, um, uh, so, um, the only thing I see is it says only recommend, um, this project if committed to dry stack, meaning, um, removing the launch and replacing it.
Uh, I, I, I am still wanting to move forward with removing the existing structure and everything else. Uh, the replacement, uh, to justify spending two-plus million dollars and not launch anything?
I'm, 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 I'm with you. I'm just saying, it's, it's, it is to the city's advantage to remove.
Yes, and I def, I'm definitely gonna work my butt off to get it removed.
Well, don't do that, man. I'm just, but, 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 but basically, um, but basically this permit window, if we can hit it, um, there is an advantage to just getting that done and then putting off, you know, if people wanna argue about whatever, but I just.
Yes.
That's the thing. Okay. That's all I got, man. Thanks.
The removal, Councilmember Harris, is included in our working budget, so that component, you know, I think we can, you know, pretty confidently assume we can get done.
Councilmember Mahoney.
On, on the negative forklift issues and stuff like that, we're talking about contracting out, I also think we should look at lease options, because a lot of times we can do it cheaper, they have the parts, they have the replacements.
And those.
So please include that.
Yeah.
Um, I do think, since, uh, there's been the opinions, I do believe this is for the next phase of the dock replacement is about the time. So the, having a feasibility study on this and being ready for that along with, with that process being done makes a lot of sense. Because you are gonna save some costs, because you're doing a lot of things at the same time. But I, and the last thing, I, I know it's been said up there, I think it could be more than just storing boats. Um, I think we've got an opportunity here to not only do that and add revenue to the marina itself, but in, in not only the boat storage stream, but you'd also be able to take advantage of, say, there were shops or some of the other things where the leases, the additional sales taxes, and of course, like I've said before, with a couple other uses, the draw of other people coming to our community and leaving their dollars here.
Councilmember Harris.
Okay, so here, now, here's the unpleasant part.
Okay.
Um, we talked about it at the Finance Committee thing. It's not you. It's just basically, um, the discussion and, um, I just, the first record I have of the, of a presentation is 1999. And there was always, there's always this notion that, well, we can put it off and, yeah, you know, the sheds are starting to, you know, and the docks and everything like that. Um, there's no urgency in any of the other comments you've heard, okay? And, um, it's like, well, what do we want it to be and so forth? And, um, my primary interest is in the marina paying for itself. And every year we look at, I'm almost, uh, every year we get that report and it says, we brought in five, our expenses are four, you know, ta-da. But that's not really what it is. What it is, is these long-term liabilities that go out. And I would just urge you as part of this, um, to get a real, uh, some, a real sense of like, what's wearing out along what timeline? Because that's really the point of this discussion, when you, when you get down to it, is, uh, not, uh, it's like the, if, if this isn't the solution, what is the solution to financing the enterprise fund out to the end of the Reed Milton report? Um, and so that's just the only thing I didn't, it, it, I'm just always struck by, it's like, yeah, it's fine, and maybe we'll do this, and maybe we'll do that. And I'm, but you know what? It, it's, it's kinda here now, is what I'm, and when I look at the launch, I mean, you know, it had a life expectancy, and wouldn't you know it, when it hit the life expectancy, it became unsafe. So I just, I, I wish that was more part of the discussion. Um, anyway, thanks.
Appreciate it.
So I'd like to clarify for a moment, this, what you're doing right now is you're gathering information from us that we would like to see when you come back, right? And so we're giving you direction about, because we don't want you to spin your wheels studying and bringing back data and stuff on something we're not interested in, right? Okay, so just, just clarifying, so in regard to bullet number one, if nobody is interested in open stack, it wouldn't make sense for you to do that. So I wanna double check with the council, do we want him to, or whoever, the, the team, to bring back feasibility information on both dry and open stack? No? Well, just dry. Is anybody interested in, uh, data on open stack?
Clarification, I did, I did make my comment saying that I was interested in both.
Okay.
Dry stack and the possibility, as, as Harbor Master said, to the south being some open storage as well.
Okay.
So I, I'm, I'm looking at a, a combination.
All right, all right. Just wanna go down the bullets here. So locations in existing or consider the entire marina floor? Do you, do we all want, uh, just this one, uh, proposal that we received today? Or would we like, uh, the team to look at some other locations? Other locations, other locations, okay? Um, s, optimal structure and size, so where, we would like shed roof, uh, standard roof, um, also flat, flat roof, right? And then also an adjacent, how you would incorporate an adjacent structure? Would you do it on the, on the south side, on the west side, where the third row of, right? So options of where you would put any adjacent structure, correct? Is that, you mostly talked about that, Councilmember Mahoney.
Yeah, I, uh, yes, definitely. The other component I would add is the potential to take advantage of green energy. It's a large surface.
Or like solar panels?
Solar panels, those types of things. I think there's, um, there's some opportunity to maximize the space.
All right, um, then, uh, do you wanna stay on this slide?
I have a question.
Okay, could you go back to the other slide then?
No, it's, I don't need the other slide.
I do. I'm, I'm in the middle of a.
Oh, you're in the middle of something.
So go ahead.
So, um, yeah, are there, is there a less expensive structural option than the tilt-up?
I, you know, to be honest, I'm unsure, but I'll look around. I mean, I know some of the big warehouses, there are concrete panels that stand up, and I don't know, I'm not sure if that's a lot less, you know, financially than a steel structure. I, and different things, it, I definitely.
No, 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 my, my point is, basically, I think an option to get something up as quickly as possible that we can start making revenue from immediately, and then sell the components when we get a design that is the future of the marina. I think that should be something that is, does that make sense, what I'm saying?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so you've got the, those items. You already have the, you included the, the capacity, the size, the footprint. If we could get, I, I don't know how much this is asking, but this is, it was pretty fabulous to be able to see the flyover today. And if there's a, an affordable way when this comes back to be able to, it doesn't, it doesn't have to be a nice, smooth drone, but just a little bit more of a, um, opaque look that you're not gonna be able to see this, or, you know, if I stand here, this is what it's gonna look like if I, and.
That was one of my challenges yesterday with this, 'cause I'm going, okay, I have one thing that can go 35, and taking a picture from here, it looks like it's way up that way, so trying to get that perspective, so trying to figure out, you know, I'll get, get a scissor lift and get the same height, so you can see where 35 looks across and some of those things. And then I can maybe ask Mike to do a flyby in his plane.
Yeah, but you know, if you, what, what is it gonna look like if you're standing up there looking out? I know that there is a difference between having 35, a foot, 35, or a structure in front of me that's five feet away, but if you put it out 25 feet away, you're gonna, I'm not, I'm not gonna see as much when the structure's further away. So I think that that is gonna be an important thing when we're trying to make a decision. I know condo owners came over and had me sit in a certain place on their couch to look out the window, and then they put a drawing on their window saying, this is what it's gonna look like. So I, I'm feeling that I'm gonna get that kind of invitation again if we move forward. So it'd be nice to somehow give us an idea before I sit in the couch, this is what you're gonna see if this is 25 feet away, or this is 50 feet away, right?
I think, Mayor, if I could, um, offer a friendly, maybe compromise on that?
Yeah.
Renderings and fly-throughs are extremely expensive.
Okay.
So what I would propose is let us do this feasibility study and bring you back preliminary options, and then we narrow it down, so we spend those funds on the options you're really interested in?
Excellent.
Okay.
I'm totally on that with you. Okay, so then, let's see. Interest in beautifying structures through facade and architectural, and are we interested in, in that kind of, like, and what are you talking about, siding options? Like, are you wanna do hardy siding, metal siding? Okay, okay. Um, all right, looks like we have nods on that. Also, some clarity about where the revenue can go. I know, I know we've talked about that a lot, but just very, very clear on when we're making money, what can we do with that, with that revenue?
Depends, yeah.
And then maybe some kind of an estimate about when we're gonna get the true ROI. I mean, you get, if you get a ROI that's paying off a debt, that's true. But when do you get the free and clear ROI with the projection out? And, um, um, you're gonna include, I'm sure you're gonna include estimated operational costs, initial outlay. You did the boats, how high? Okay. Okay, so I think all of the questions that I had. So I think all of the questions that I had. Oh, one more question. How many boats that are being replaced right now because, or displaced, I'm going to say this, how many of the boats that are being displaced with the current construction project with the LM and N docks would qualify or?
To go in.
To go into this? Yeah, let's say it was done.
Zero.
Zero, okay.
LM and N are thirty-six, forty, and fifty-foot slips.
Okay.
The structure we're hoping for and the demographics we're hoping is for is that thirty-two and below.
And where does that begin?
That begins on K dock.
Okay, so right, then it would be phase two of the next.
Correct.
All right. So if this were to be built in the next few years, we would be soliciting almost entirely from other areas besides our own marina?
Yes and no. Yeah, we would hope for a lot of those people to come to this new structure, but we're also going to have people that always wanted this option, would love to have their boat not just sitting in the water, they're going to be moving off too. So I think it's a combination.
Mm-hmm. But then that leaves you with empty slips. Yeah. Okay. All right. I think that's mine, my input, go ahead, Councilmember.
I hate to do.
No, I don't think you hate it, but.
Oh, no, 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 I really do. Man, you know, no. So if we had a structure today, do you think you could fill it?
I do.
Okay. See, the thing is, and I'm just being real here, because the deal is, there was always this notion that we owed something to existing boat owners. And I'm just throwing it out there, we do not. It is a business. If you can fill it, you fill it, and as the boats come off the water, if they want a spot, great. But I would say to my colleagues, the same arguments for a ferry are the same arguments that work for this. Because this, we have the ideal location for this thing, and demographic and everything, and when people talk about how some marinas have dry stack and some don't. Every marina that doesn't have a dry stack has an, has a sort of a twinner facility down the road that provides that. You just, it's just wherever you have people that have small boats, and we're in this location where, where are you going to go? So that, I would just say in the feasibility thing, just please make clear, if you, if you believe that you, you know, we can fill this thing and it won't be a either-or kind of a deal, yeah, does that make sense?
I mean, and you could, you could still fill, you could still keep the same amount of slips full and fill that as well.
I believe we can fill it with, with new revenue and some of our in-water revenue, and then, and then that in-water revenue would also increase, because we do have those people that still want that, and we just don't have space for it yet. So they will come. And during our summer months, we're looking for space. So I, I believe that'll still happen.
Okay, good, that's good information to include. Councilmember Mahoney.
So, quick question though. So we, say we build this thing and fill it with boats, but then now we're doing the rest of the docks. Now we have no location for the placement. That's always been part of the strategy, is be able to move boats around a little bit more. How, how would we manage that? We just tell them that they got to take their boats and?
During.
During.
During future construction and different things.
Exactly.
In water? Yeah, that would be, that would be challenging, yes.
Yeah.
Won't lie about it. You know, right now, we are going to be filling all of our guest mortgage with the LM and N dock folks. We don't have enough room for them, so we're working on instead of programs, and people are working on getting their own, helping us help them. So like, and so that would be, that would be a lot of work to, to keep both operations running that way, yes. It would be.
Thank you.
Are we all good? Are you good, Councilmember Oxiger? Sometimes I miss your hand, and I'm so sorry about that. I do miss you. Do you guys feel like you have all the direction that you need to bring back something for us?
I'm always open for an email.
Okay, all right.
Please.
Okay. Good. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Thanks, Scott. Okay, so now it's time for new business, new agenda items for consideration. This is the time for, the purpose of proposing new business items for discussion on a future agenda. It's not time for council action or questions about items that have already been. Oh, all right. I was like, oh. Councilmembers can submit questions or seek updates on previously discussed business to the city manager at any time. So do any councilmembers have new business that they would like to propose? Councilmember Mahoney?
I do.
Okay.
I was raising my hand because I was so excited about this.
So excited.
So I've been meeting with the Mass Center, the diving community, SR3's been part of it, our city manager, Highline College, Highline School District, the Harbor Master's office, Parks and Recreation, just about everybody. We had some conversations, and there's an animal that's in our waters called the six-gill shark, blunt-nosed six-gill shark to be, and don't ask me to give the scientific pronunciation because I twist my tongue. But it's an amazing creature. It can get up to seventeen feet. It's a scavenger. As a diver, you're not feared about shark attack, but it's, it's endangered in our area, and there needs to be education. And it's particularly something that the Redondo area has the most sightings in the sound. They reached out to me because they want to bring attention to this creature, and they're, and one of our ideas was to make Des Moines the six-gill shark capital of the world. And we do a proclamation, there was discussion on ideas with education boards, other, other, other things with the Mass Center and SR3 in combination in the city. We even talked about taking Sixth Avenue down in, down in the marina district and giving an honorary name of Six, Six-Gill Ave. Stuff like that, where we can do some things. We also believe there's funding for the storyboards and some of the other things, so it wouldn't necessarily be a cost to the city, but it's a really good story to bring attention to the city, to, to, to our city and this magnificent creature. I've dove about twenty years, I've only seen a couple of them. They're very rare, they, but extremely incredible animals. So with that, all of us together got, got together and met, and it was a request that, that what would happen is, we'd like to add that to an agenda in the future. The Mass Center, Russ Higley in particular, would be the one giving the main presentation. And then it was, and I think it's one of those great stories that this city could share. We already have a couple of great institutions that, that feature our great sea life, but here's one that we'd all get behind and kind of like a mascot of the city. And no one's ever done anything like this that I know of, and I think it's a great opportunity to bring all these entities together. So I'm, I'm looking for a couple of people to help me bring that to a future council meeting where you'd see the presentation, the video of the creature and so forth.
I have a question. Oh, so what would be the ideal expectation of the city support in your, like in your?
So the city support, if like honorary name of a sign, help with the installations, storyboards. There are some avenues that some of the city folks might have for grants and funding along with the other institutions. A proclamation, a ribbon cutting, July sixth is the date that we'd like to make the honorary six-gill shark day. And it would just be maybe that kind of a proclamation and combination. We could use like farmer's market and other things for entities. The, the city's involvement would be more fun and might tap a little bit to the resources, but it would be what I would consider limited.
Okay, we have a nod. I think for me, if you did bring it back, that'd be nice to answer that, like, what, what kind of resources would be tapped?
Well, and that's part of it, is if it's brought forward. I know that the city managers were speaking to a couple of entities too on this when I brought her on, into the meeting. So that would probably be included in whatever would be brought forward to us about what our responsibility would be versus the commitments of other entities.
Cool. So it looks like you got plenty of nods, so.
Great.
All right. So any other new items? All right, so on to the next thing. Councilmember reports are next, and we're going to begin with Councilmember Harris.
Thank you. Let's see here. So it's been a while, and I am a member of the King County Emergency Management Advisory Committee, and we had our first meeting of the year yesterday, and it's more, what happens with any of these regional committees is that the first meeting of the year is sort of people, you know, getting reacquainted and so forth. And let's see here, I was in Olympia, so we talked about that a bit, and let's see if there's anything else. We had some, a little comment on Black History Month, you know, my family, my wife, my kids, you know, African-American, I guess, and my in-laws and family and so forth, and I just, it's something, just because of my temperament, we, we have these various issues and proclamations. My father-in-law, he is, he has this, these little aphorisms, and one is, you know, you can, you can do a proclamation, or you can give me some money, and I'd rather have the money. You know, he came from a time period in Alabama in the fifties and sixties, and uplift was to achieve economic success and good education. And I tend to focus on those kinds of just nuts and bolts aspects of uplift, and, because that's how I'm wired. I know there were a number of, this seems like a different thing, but a bunch of community members were interested in the police and immigration and all of that sort of thing. And the police chief put out what I thought was an outstanding memo on that. And I fully support it, but I didn't comment on that either, because it's something where I believe Ted's going to do the right thing. And so it just doesn't, you know, occur to me to speak to symbolism. But it, you know, it doesn't mean that the feelings aren't there, it's just, for me personally, I've got all I can handle working on the mechanics of making the city a better place, and that's kind of, but I do understand that symbolism for people, you have to show people what you value, because they're not following those practical issues, they're not watching the meetings and so forth. And so I want to applaud the chief for that, and I wish we could do more for Black History Month. It's been one of my things here that, that, you know, I don't, our city is now fifty percent BIPOC, and I wish there was a way to, to make that more, just create more awareness of that, but I don't know how to get there, and I welcome comments from the public on how to do so. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Mahoney.
Only got one thing. Tomorrow at the Activity Center from six to eight, is the, is it the Sweethearts Ball or this Valentine's Dance, or? Valentine's Dance. If Bonnie's had anything to do with it, you know it'd be spectacular. Is there any tickets left? Oh, really? You're supposed to know that.
I know, I know, sorry.
You didn't know I was going to queue, queue it up? That's all I had, but I could tell you that going to a restaurant, being packed with thirty-seven other couples trying to have a romantic moment, never works out well, even if you try. So my advice is scrap that, come see, come to the dance and have a really good time, a little bit more intimacy there. Thank you. That's all I had.
Thank you. Councilmember Nettin.
No comments, Mayor, thank you.
All right. Councilmember Oxiger.
Yes, just want everybody to know that on the twenty-second of February, Saturday morning, we are going to be having a nonprofits summit, all of the groups that contribute to making this a great place to live, are coming together to see if we can coordinate, see what we can do to help each other, and also see what the city can do to support such efforts and build some community spirit. So I think it's going to be a great opportunity to be at the senior, well, the Activity Center, and looking forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Steinmetz.
Thank you. And, you know, boy, it's been a busy first month and a half of, of the year, so, you know, but I've been to the grand opening of Iris and Peony, attended the What's Up Des Moines event. There is a group called the, I think, Soundside Alliance, which is a economic development-oriented group that Mayor Buxton has been participating in, and she's asked me if I would take over that role. And so we had a really good meeting with that, with one of the members, and so I'm going to be participating in, in that from now on. The Waterland Pride Committee had a pancake breakfast that was absolutely fabulous, and I was back there cooking pancakes and flipping them, so had a great time. It was, it was a really nice event with, with a lot of people. I still am the Sound Cities Association Public Interest Committee, or Public Issues Committee member, representing the council on that. We had a meeting in January, there was a, an orientation for the new people last night, and so I, I didn't attend that. And I am still the liaison to Destination Des Moines, and I've been attending their meetings, working with the, they've got a lot of new members, they have a whole new membership. If people are looking to get involved in a local group, that really is a fabulous group that does a lot of great events, and they always need a lot of volunteers, and, you know, they'll take whatever you can give, frankly. But I think that you'll find that it's really going to, the next couple of years are going to be really positive in the way that they're working with everybody in the community to try to make some of these events bigger and grander and more fun. So I would encourage anybody that's interested in that to do that. Otherwise, I think, you know, that's, that's all I'll leave you with right now. So, thanks.
All right. Well, thank you for the report out. Appreciate, I was at some of these events, it was fun to participate. Both Councilmember Mahoney and Deputy Mayor Steinmetz were at the What's Up Des Moines downtown, and great gathering of community businesses, the city manager was there. And actually, the, they featured our, our staff. So Rebecca gave her presentation, the police chief gave a presentation, city manager talked. So it was, it was, who am I missing? Who am I missing?
You spoke.
Well, I did. Nobody else was up. I think that was, anyway, it was a really great opportunity to feature the work that the staff does and, and to hear, for the businesses to hear who does what. So I really appreciated those folks down at Edward Jones hosting that quarterly to, to help our businesses out. I attended a ribbon cutting for a really, the coolest accessible park I think I've ever seen in my life, just north, it's called Pathways Park. It's right on the Gilm, Burt Gilman Trail, just north of UW, but the executive was using it as a launch to say, I'm going to get this new King County Parks Levy going, right? And so they featured this park. It had swings for every kind of person who had any bodily challenge. I mean, they had swings that you could lay an adult down in, or, you know, strap a large person or small person in coolest swings. They had a merry-go-round that you could wheel a wheelchair in too safely, and then use a merry-go-round. So just a cool, cool place, but it was also for me an opportunity to brag about us, what we have here in our trail system, our parks, and especially the Des Moines Creek Trail, which is part of that King County Trail System. So it was fun to brag about our park. I had a great opportunity to visit with Commissioner Feldman, Port Commissioner, just to visit about airport issues, and a great opportunity to connect. I am now, have transitioned on to the Puget Sound Regional Council Executive Board, and so Puget Sound Regional Council there, the conduit for federal funding into this region, so they, they kind of get to make the decision about all this money that comes from the federal government. federal government, but they're involved in, they would like to get a housing research center up, up and going for the UW, but they need money from Olympia, they're working on that. They've got a regional safety action plan, which is all about roads, so they might be working on trying to put in regulations for bike lanes and things like that, trying to create more safety for the regional roads. And they're beginning their comp plan reviews, and so that'll be something that I'll be busy reading, too, in the next year, so. Then, I think that's all my crosses off, so I want to say again, and appreciate the city manager's weekly report, if you're not catching that, there's a ton of information in it, every single week, on Friday it comes out, and then I, I try and also to put out a summary a couple of times a month about what I'm doing, so if you guys want to catch that, too, it's, two more sources of information, we're trying really hard to get more information out. So, without further ado, this concludes our meeting for this evening. The next meeting date will be a regular business meeting on February twenty-seventh, right here, at six PM. Please remember to pick up after yourself, got to take all that candy home, I don't want to take any of that candy home. And, uh, then Deputy Mayor Steinmetz, would you like to take the motion?
I move to adjourn.
Time first and seconded, all in favor, raise your right hand, six-zero, thank you for coming. (applause)